Meeting will come to order. Good evening and welcome to this Tuesday, July 19th, 2016 Mercer Island City Council meeting. Ally, could you call the roll?
Mayor Bruce Bassett.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Debbie Burtland. Councilmember Dan Grous.
Here.
Councilmember Jeff Sanderson.
Here.
Councilmember Wendy Wyker.
Here.
Councilmember David Wiesentiner. Councilmember Benson Wong.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. First item of business is agenda approval. Is there any desire to change the agenda for this evening? It's mercifully short, and I'm hoping it stays that way.
It's not moving.
All right. So seconded.
Seconded.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We come to appearances, a time when anybody may address the council on any issue they wish. You have three minutes. Please begin by introducing yourself, giving your address. Steve, you are ready to rule.
I'm ready to rule.
And general rules of conduct are on the back wall, but all boils down to just please be civil.
To move with them. That's it.
How come you're not in Cleveland?
Let's not get too political, please.
We'll talk about that later. I hope it doesn't go off my time.
No.
So, I'm Steve Marshall, 8150 West Mercer Way. I serve two terms on the Planning Commission, and I have a request tonight to make to you in connection with the Mercer Island Episcopal Rectory, the Emmanuel Episcopal Rectory, which here we'll talk about that a little bit more, but my request is that we do with the religious institutions on Mercer Island, the churches, synagogues, and other institutions, what we did with the schools while I was on the Planning Commission, which is to put them into a zone of their own, and to deal with issues that come up under the First Amendment and other issues that apply to all the churches, like the issues applied to the schools. We don't have to decide what those are, but I think having a framework where all of the churches, synagogues, and other institutions are within a single type of zoning makes it easier to address those issues that are unique to those institutions. As Lucia will express, we're running into some issues with the rectory, which basically is low-income housing. You want people who work on Mercer Island or live on Mercer Island, it's very difficult to do. We'll give you more details on that later. There are other institutions, I understand. St. Monica's looking at what they might want to do with housing for some of their staff and so forth, but rather than do the details, I think the framework would be good if we could have an overall zoning like we did with schools. And it really doesn't have to be much more complicated than that. Pretty simple set of issues, you do that framework, and then you can address the sub-issues that come after that. I'll talk to the Planning Commission too, but I think the basic idea would be to have the council request the Planning Commission to come up with an overall framework for this, and then to develop rules later on as they might apply to the various things that might come out of the overall look. And that look may take a while to find out what are the issues, are they impervious surface issues, are they other zoning-type issues that, like what we did with the schools, which is we reduced the requirement on impervious surfaces to allow the schools to have a little more latitude. So that would be one example of something that could be developed later, but the overall framework is what I'm trying to get at today without going into the details. So Lucia has, I think, submitted something to the council members. I think our current rector, Hunt Priest, who's actually leaving, and has kind of detailed some of what he had to do when he lived on the island, he had five times in rental housing. It was a very difficult situation, and so we're trying to build a rectory to alleviate that condition so that we can recruit the next person because Hunt's leaving. My time's up, but thank you for listening, and I'll also send around a little write-up on the requests that I have, but it's an easy request, it should get underway as soon as you can.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. Lucia Pirtsevirely, 4212 West Mercer Way. You have probably received, or I'm sure you've received my comments from earlier today. As the architect for the Emmanuel Episcopal Church Rectory, I'm here to speak to you tonight about the catch-22 between, of a residential project being caught in the definition of an institutional zoning. The rectory will sit on an undivided parcel of land owned by the church, so whereas it is a single-family project for all intents and purposes, it will be considered institutional from a land use perspective. It will adhere to the requirements of a single-family use as far as building design, construction, fire suppression are concerned. The city will require the church to pay the new school impact fee of $14,000 for a new single-family residential project, in addition to all other permit fees and the variance fees. For land use purposes, it will be considered an institution, and because the overall site will have a lot coverage greater than 40%, it is required to undergo an impervious surface variation, variance, sorry. The particular variance, this particular variance is a moment where the definition between a lot coverage deviation for residential versus an impervious surface variance for institutional blurs the definitions, and the issue goes from being one of zoning to that of engineering. This has forced the detention requirements to an increase, to increase the tank size four times, going from an $8,000 to $10,000 scope to five to six times the cost. Furthermore, the church is required to replace an area of adjacent parking lot with pervious paving equal in area to the new impervious surface, another significant cost. And this giant tank, I mean, it's enormous, will significantly disrupt the natural hydrology of the site. When we submitted the variance, we did it adhering to the requirements of the city in the, with the intention of circling back later to find an alternate solution more in line with the scope of work and budget of the project. The hearing examiner stated that this seemed an unfortunate result of city policy with unforeseen impacts at the time of its formulation. We believe this is an unintended consequence of policy that was implemented to put out, put onus on developers who are significantly increasing stormwater runoff on the island with their high-impact development. In the case of the church, the impact of the institutional-scale detention system required is inconsistent with the scope of proposed work and adjacent development, and could result in shutting down the project altogether, which is intended to affordably house the rector of a church that provides significant benefit to this community beyond its direct congregation. We anticipate other religious institutions will want to provide affordable housing for their leaders in a community where no such thing exists. We ask you to request, we ask you request the Planning Commission add the evaluation of an exception to lot coverage variance for residential projects on institutional properties to their work calendar as they consider revisions to the Development Code so that their pastors, priests, rabbis, and imams can be affordably housed in the community they are serving. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I'm closing public comments. Thank you. Process for, Pam, can you just talk for a moment about process for scoping the residential code?
Yes.
Public effort?
Yes, the scope was going through the Planning Commission, and we'll be coming back to the council at the August 1st meeting, the scope and the schedule for doing the residential code work.
And so it's being suggested we direct the Planning Commission as to what the scope is, it's starting with Planning Commission coming to council, and then the council will set it, and it goes back to Planning Commission for its effort? Is that right?
Yes, so that the Planning Commission and the, so the council has the opportunity to approve the scope and add, change, whatever, before it goes back to the Planning Commission.
Okay. So citizens who have an interest in this could talk to the Planning Commission at their next meeting, which is tomorrow? They could talk to the council at our next meeting?
Yes.
Or they could talk now as to have, and those will all be good input points?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, we move to the consent calendar. We have payables, payroll, and three sets of minutes. Is there a motion to accept the consent calendar?
Yes.
All right, moved and seconded. Is there anybody who wishes to pull anything? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move to regular business. Agenda Bill 5203, Booster Chlorination Station Project. Jason, I am assuming you're going to start us off here and introduce your panel of folks, is that right?
Correct. Mr. Director, Jason Kenner, Public Works Director. We are here tonight to talk about the Booster Chlorination Station Project.
Hold on, Jason, hold on.
Good? Can we start over? All right, for the record, Jason Kenner, Public Works Director. We're here tonight to talk about the Booster Chlorination Station Project. It was proposed to you guys, to the council, last council meeting, as part of the 2017, 2018 CIP project. With me tonight is Brian McDaniel, our Utility Operations Manager, Anton Elhau, our Assistant to the Engineer, Derek Pell, and Deita Carter behind us here from Department of Health.
She's wise.
So tonight we have about 10 slides to get through, and I'm sure you guys have plenty of questions for us on this. You recall back in January, we came to you with a water system plant, or not a water system plant, we came back to you with a post-boil water event response in terms of what progress had been made, and here tonight to talk about some additional follow-up, and then specifically about the Booster Chlorination Project.
So we have a graphic of how water gets to the island. We are provided water from Seattle Public Utilities. On the right-hand portion of the slide, we have the Cascade East Side Supply Pipe. The pipe is owned by Seattle Public Utilities. It comes across, moving to the left, across the Mercer Slough, and it splits, and it comes across the bridge, I-90 Bridge, joins back together on the Anatai Point in Bellevue, comes across land, and then it splits again with a 16-inch pipe that actually is attached to the East Channel Bridge. And then, parallel to that, going underneath the East Channel, we have an SPU pipe that goes under the channel, and it converges at the boat ramp. That pink or purple line, if you will, is owned by SPU, and that pipe continues up to the reservoir point. Something noteworthy along that pipe, Mercer Island, we have a slide later that will kind of illustrate the different points where the water actually comes off of that pipe, but along that 24-inch pipe on the way to the reservoir, it also supplies water to Shorewood. There is a meter at the boat ramp that supplies the blue line that goes along East Mercer Way that also terminates at the reservoir. There is a second meter on that, on the way up to the reservoir, which is 40th and 92nd area, and then finally, there's a third meter at the reservoir point.
So I'm sorry, if, before you go on, you talked about, so you talked about, I just want to understand the difference between red and blue here, or whatever you're calling. So help me, when you said there's a line, tell me what the difference between the red line and the blue line is, so that I understand those.
That's a good question. So the, the blue line is a line that is connected directly to the meter at the boat ramp, and that is owned by the city of Mercer Island. So the blue line is direct ownership of the city of Mercer Island.
All the way out along I-90 to Factoria?
It actually stops at the boat ramp. They use blue in the graphic.
I'll try to get this laser pointer to work.
So at this point right here, both the pipe here that goes underneath the East Channel and the one that comes across on the bridge where they converge, they converge that separate from this blue line. It is actually separate. And then this line is SPUs. So after these two converge...
So the two lines coming across, one underwater and one on the bridge, are SPU lines?
That's correct.
They get to the, the point at the boat ramp, they merge?
They merge, and it would be better to show this as if it were all pink right there, indicating all of Seattle Public Utilities. And I hope I have a slide that might further explain this a little bit later, of how the water actually flows and kind of some of the pressure zones within the...
Okay. And then the blue line going down East Mercer Way is a Mercer Island line, and the red line coming across is the SPU line?
Yeah.
Okay.
Effectively, if we had a water meter right here, that would be feeding water off of the pink line to the blue line. We own the blue line.
Okay.
If that helps.
Yeah, thank you.
That blue line, the blue line is, you said it goes back to the reservoir, does it, the water that is serving the people on that blue line, is that coming from the reservoir or coming from Seattle, coming from Seattle's line?
That's a great question as well, and so that pipe actually does have transmission off of it, and then I have another slide that will hopefully explain this a little bit better, but that is not connected, it is not receiving water out of the reservoir tank itself. It is not receiving water out of the reservoir tank itself.
But it connects to the reservoir, so anything...
It fills the reservoir in a different pressure zone.
So anyone, okay. Okay.
Thank you. So post-boil water, the city worked with Confluence Engineering and Department of Health to come up with our, essentially our mitigation, our response, our coliform response action plan, and you're familiar with this graphic. The green items, the green items are completed components of our reaction plan, or response plan. The black remain to be completed. Most of them are underway. There's two key elements that will carry into next year, and we're here to talk about one of them tonight, with the Booster Chlorination Station, and then the other piece that will carry into next year, the next, the next round, is the Phase 3 of the retrofit of the standalone vaults. There's seven vaults that are larger scale, we have to engineer a design specification for that, and those are projected to be completed in 2017. With both of these projects being hopefully completed on the next budget biennium, we should be done with our response action plan completely by the end of the 2018 year. You're familiar, we talked about many of these issues or many of these items back in January, but it's, it's important to note that post-boil water, staff's knowledge of our distribution system, of our water quality monitoring, just of our water operations has expanded leaps and bounds. We've, we've talked about the SPU coordination collaboration before. We've been very collaborative with SPU and vice versa. We're working with them to install a water quality analyzer at the boat launch on the SPU, where the two pipes combine, on that SPU pipe, which is, which is good progress. We've done a number of retrofit and system modifications to our existing system, and as I mentioned before, there's a couple items that are remaining, but they're underway, and we expect to finish them on the next budget biennium.
We've presented this slide before, and kind of speaking to some of the items that Jason was talking about. Pre-boil water event, this graphic illustrates our sampling sites on the island where we were doing our monthly monitoring, pretty sparse, and you can see that while we did have some representation, but perhaps not full representation of the island. So a couple of things that has happened is that with the second graphic, all of the monitoring locations that we are now doing, pre-event, we were only collecting data in these very few areas. Post-event, all of the dots represented on this map indicate points that we are actually collecting data on, both chlorine levels, and in addition, we are doing our surveillance monitoring where we actually characterize what's happening out in the distribution system using these other points as well.
If I understand this, there's only that one green dot that is on the, that, is that green dot up near just south of the boat launch, is that on that blue line? Or is there any of these sampling points on that blue line?
There are not, there are not points on that blue line.
Thank you.
I need to explain the differences of the different colors on the...
So the different colors on the left-hand map, the red dots are the areas where we are monitoring what we call our SCADA, Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition. These are monitoring sites where we are monitoring the water, like Mr. Grous said, the blue line, we are monitoring the water that comes in on that blue line constantly 24 hours a day, so that's, those are the red dots on the left graphic. The green dots are the, what we call the TCR, and I apologize for all the acronyms, our industry loves acronyms. We call them the Total Coliform Monitoring Sites. Total coliform, those are the monthly samples that we take every month with the coliforms and report those to Department of Health, those are regulatory samples. The blue dot is, those are dots that we call our DPD, Disinfection Byproducts Rule. When we talk about adding chlorine to the water, we also have to be cognizant of what is happening with that chlorine and what's it doing within the distribution system when it's all used up, so that's what we use the DPD monitoring sites for, and they are specifically located throughout the island at the further, furthest points of our distribution system. Over on the right-hand side, now the colors are kind of a little bit skewed, and I think that the purple ones are the ones that I want to draw your attention to. Those are the ones, the sites that we call our surveillance monitoring. When we speak of surveillance monitoring, one time a month, we go to these sites and we collect data such as pH, chlorine, total free iron, and R2A HPC coliform bacteria samples, and we're using that data to compile and model what is, what we consider a normal condition within our distribution system. So having a good grasp and understanding of what is a normal condition, so that's what we're using those sites for. Those are effectively not regulatory samples, those are what came out of the boil water event as part of that action plan that we actually, that we characterize what's happening in our distribution system.
Thank you.
Kind of talked about some of these things. Operationally, we have a target in our distribution system of .6 or greater milligrams per liter of free chlorine throughout the distribution system. We use those points to measure that on that map that we were showing you. We do, have identified three sites that have presented some issues and have kind of indicated that, well, maybe we might have this happening throughout the distribution system in sites that are representative of these three sample sites. When we have these events where a trigger of below .6 milligrams per liter is identified, staff is responding by going out and actually doing bulk water turnover. Bulk water turnover is effectively hooking up to the hydrant and moving more water through a zone, and moving more water through the pipes and taking the water age, if it's a higher water age, it may have a little lower chlorine level, we try to reduce that water age so that the chlorine level comes up in the pipe. Again, it's representative of the water distribution system, it's based on age, and we also understand that because of our monitoring, that chucking the pucks in the reservoir may not always reach all points of the distribution system, so those are some of the things that we have, we have learned.
Sir, why wouldn't it reach all points in the distribution system other than the blue, other than that blue line which is chlorinated just off of the Seattle system?
So the question, I didn't hear your first part of it, but Jason...
Well, when you say putting the chlorine in, in the pucks in the reservoir won't reach the entire system, the only part of the system it doesn't reach is that little blue line that you showed us before along East Mercer, and that's presumably Seattle is, that's the water that's coming right from the Seattle system, hasn't had a chance to dechlorinate in our reservoir, which is always, part of the issue is how long it's sitting in the reservoir, so that's just coming straight in off the Seattle line when it's already been chlorinated by Seattle.
Yeah, and so...
Isn't that the only part of the system that the reservoirs aren't reaching?
No, there are other points, so I actually have a slide on that.
Okay, I'll wait for your slide.
It's a great question, the timing is perfect. So on this, this illustration, you can see that we have the bright blue colors, the green, and I guess that's more of a mustard. When water comes in from Seattle, as you mentioned, Councilman Grous, that only that blue line is what's getting the water from Seattle. Well, effectively, the mustard color is the water that's coming out of the reservoir. The, operationally, depending on how our operations are running, what time of the year, the blue portion or the purple portion is, would be receiving direct Seattle water and missing the reservoir as well. So effectively, only the mustard section, when we are boosting chlorine, that's the only portion of the island that would receive the boosted chlorine. The areas illustrated in green would not be, and this is due to the makeup of the two and three different water meters and how the reservoir is actually configured. So SPU water comes in, it would effectively feed the green zone, and operationally, at times, just the blue.
Not just the, you mean, the blue would only get, it would never have a residence time in the tank?
Correct.
Straight on?
It would be straight on, straight on. And our efforts with the, not only the modeling, but the surveillance has also confirmed what you're seeing here in this graphic.
But, and Brian, if I understand what you said before, all three of the, the test sites that you're having problem results are all in the brown or the mustard area. MI, MI 3A and 15 are over in First Hill, which is clearly all in the brown, and MI 11 is down along East Mercer at around 45th or so, and that's, would also be in the brown. I mean, that's, that's my take on it, is that correct?
That, that is correct. That is correct. So our proposal with the Booster Chlorination Station, working with our consultant, developing a plan to actually ensure that this station will reach all aspects of the distribution system, so when we switch the operation with the modifications proposed in the plan, that map would effectively turn all mustard, the mustard color, so it would all be fed from one point.
It wouldn't be fed from the reservoir, it'd be fed from your... You're saying that the chlorine that you're, the extra chlorine you're putting would in would go to the entire island, but you'd still have it coming off, the blue and the green, depending on the time of year, would still come off, would not come off the reservoir?
Correct.
So I'm confused, because let's imagine I'm somebody down in the south end of the island, for instance, but you're saying that somebody almost to the very south end of the island might get water that didn't go through the tank, but the guy just south of him's going to get water that did go through the tank. And I'm questioning whether that makes any physical sense, because what that suggests is that there's two different lines running, there's a line running separate that goes through the tank that gets to the perimeter essentially from the line that gets upstream from there.
Yes, so...
What appears to be upstream from there, at least.
So it's really hard to illustrate on a, on a flat map, you know, we're an island, so through pressure zones is how the water travels through the system, so there are actually isolations throughout the system. It, it would be fair to say that it's not 100% that one zone water reaching each piece of it. Through the modeling effort, it gets really complicated of those colors, but effectively, this is how the pressure zones break up and where the water is sourced from.
So the water actually does flow around the perimeter rather than out and down?
It can go out and down as well.
Okay.
It can. It would be blended.
Okay, but it could, it could stick to the perimeter and...
Yes.
All right, thank you. And sorry, I...
It's a great question.
Keep on going.
So what's proposed for you in the CIP is the construction of the Booster Chlor... So what's proposed for you in the CIP is the construction of the booster chlorination station. As we've mentioned here tonight, we, our data collection over the last, since the boil water event in 2014 has nearly tripled. Our knowledge of our system has increased substantially, and so we have documented that we have some residual chlorine issues within our system, and we have chlorine decay that needs to be addressed. We feel that the booster chlorination station installation is the most cost-effective way to address those needs. The water main replacement program, right now we're currently replacing .4% per year of, of the water mains. The standard is greater than 1%, so we're still below standard in terms of our mainline replacement. However, time and available resources likely an immediate global island-wide replacement program. The unidirectional flushing program that we've talked about before, where we're using high velocities to scour the insides of the pipes, to clean the biosolids, the biofilm out of the pipe, is progress in the right direction. We've done phase one. We have phase two and phase three that we're currently working on. We envision that that'll expand system-wide, but again, that's an operational, that's an operational piece that doesn't address the immediate needs of the chlorine decay in the system. So as we recommended in the CIP proposal, and what we're recommending tonight, is that we support the installation of the chlorination station to minimize our future risk of contamination. It provides our ability to respond at disinfectant in the case of emergency, and we feel that it's the most cost-effective application to the immediate need of our aging distribution system. With that, that's the end of our presentation for the night, and I'm sure you have plenty of questions for us.
Right, Dan and I have kind of hogged it. Let's give our council members over here a shot. Benson?
I know that in the past, I mean, there's been some statements that this booster station or system was required by the Department of Health. And I also note that in your agenda bill, it seems to back off from that statement, that it's something that is just fully supported by the Department of Health. And so I know at the last meeting, that question was specifically asked, and I thought the impression that we got was that this was sort of required by the Department of Health. It doesn't sound like it is.
So I can talk to the first part, and then I'll let Derek chime in. It is, the requirement is, for our coliform response plan, was that we have an on-the-shelf construction-ready design of a booster chlorination station, or booster injection. And that's what we're currently underway working on right now. However, through our new efforts in understanding our system and tracking our data, the, it's staff's recommendation that we install, not only do we design the on-the-shelf construction-ready injection system, that we actually move forward with the installation, and that's what's proposed in the 2017, 2018 CIP. That's the, that's my recollection of the requirement set forth by the Department of Health.
Derek, pull up the microphone there if you want to.
Well, before I get into the requirement, I want to stop for a moment and say how much I think the Department of Health appreciates all the work that Mercer Island has done in the last 18 to 20 months. You were dealt a significant blow when ECOI was identified in your system, and that blow was made doubly worse or exponentially worse when together we lifted the health advisory associated with the first occurrence and then found ECOI again. I've not experienced that before, and it was a lot of work by a lot of people just to get through the event. And then the amount of work that's gone into follow-up on that has been very impressive. That work was outlined in an action plan, an action response plan, that was part and parcel to lifting the health advisory back in late October of 2014. So to the degree, I'll answer your question directly, is the disinfection required? The action plan was required. The elements of the action plan included an assessment by a third-party consultant that you hired, and your consulting engineer said that the disinfection, the data collected over the subsequent 18 months showed that there are some continued vulnerabilities, and that the ability to boost disinfection is really important. I think the requirement from the Department of Health was that you had a design ready to go. We did not mandate that you install it, but the amount of data and the kind of data that you've collected has given you a really good insight into how your system works and where you are vulnerable. And I think having that tool in the toolbox ready to use is very valuable.
Lenny, Jeff?
I want to go slightly different place, the water main replacement. I mean, it just strikes me that this rate is awful low, and we have some really old pipes, right? So when you write about time and available resources, can you educate me a little bit more about that and what could be done or proposed to the citizens or overall to accelerate our rate of replacing the oldest of the old?
For the record, Ann Tenella-How, Assistant City Engineer. I think I can touch a little bit on, on that, part of that question. Some of it we may be better able to address at the, at your next meeting when we bring the water system plan back. However, that being said, we have a single engineer, utilities engineer, who devotes all of her efforts to the water utility, to the capital projects on the water utility side. And in a good year, we're able to get maybe a mile of pipe, I think it's about a mile worth of pipe replaced in that given year. So knowing that our, I'm not even sure how many miles of pipe that we have, but knowing that we, that we are-
113.
How much?
113.
113. So we have 113 miles, and we're a very old system. So we, we are actively trying to be as proactive as we can to replace on a, on a really aggressive basis. But where we're standing today, the, the rates and the resources, the staffing resources that we have just can't support much more than we're currently putting out the door.
Lenny, or Jeff? Or you guys? Duke Adalova.
So I'm thinking about the flushing and the chucking of pucks, and I wonder if you could clarify the vulnerabilities that we're facing. If we don't do the booster pump, or if we put it off a year, or, I'm sorry, the chlorination pump. So tell me what it looks like if, if we want to save a little money for a little while longer, even though health and safety is our number one priority. I just, I want to be clear with this price tag. Is this imminent threat? Is, I mean, can you give me a little bit of magnitude here?
We could, Brian and I can both take this one. So I would say that the data is showing that we have, as Derek said, we have vulnerabilities within our system. We are having, it's chlorine decay within our system is an obstacle that we have to overcome. The longer we delay, the more risk is involved with that. The unidirectional flushing program, it takes a significant amount of staff resources and time to figure out where loops and how, where and how to flush, how to discharge the water. It's, it's not something, although we're moving to phase two and phase three, it's going to be an operational change that over time will make a significant impact. But for the short term, it's, it's going to be fairly localized within the, you know, specific areas that the phases are focused on. Anything else to add?
Yeah, thanks, Jason. The, so to kind of build a little bit on what is required to continue under the normal operation that we are doing, I briefly pulled some numbers. When we realize a low number, we realize less than .6 milligrams per liter of free chlorine, we respond by flushing. We go out and flush. And I had 29 since October 15 notifications of low chlorine, and I threw a couple of quick estimates together. That's effectively one month's worth of an FTE's time just for that particular flushing, not the other surveillance flushing as well. So it is a significant impact to staff time. On the other side, what do we do to boost the chlorine? Chucking the pucks actually satisfy in-term, I think, if I got the question correctly. My concern as the operator that the chucking the pucks was a great stopgap through our monitoring and how the system reacted when we did that. And again, I was here, but I reviewed the data. The data reflect that we were, it perhaps wasn't the best method of applying chlorine. Chlorine is something that needs to be taken very, very seriously, and it needs to be put in our drinking water at a very precise metered weight. And by adding chlorine to a tank that arbitrarily can go with throughout the distribution system, not monitoring, I think we are exposing ourselves to further risk.
I think one of the things also, just to keep in the back of your brains, is that we, you know, we have, we have recently come out of a recession, so we've been very, very fortunate with our capital project costs being as low as they have been. This year, we are starting to see an increase in contracted costs. So I would, I'm, I'm going to predict, I'm going out on a limb, I'm going to predict that, that as the economy continues to improve, those costs are going to continue to go up. What that looks like next year, two years, two bienniums from now, I don't know. But I don't think that we're going to be able to stay at the same great rates, great, great capital dollars that we've, that we've been able to see in the last couple of years, so.
Let's go in a different direction for a minute. So we are buying water from Seattle, and you've, Jason talked before, and Derek as well, about how we're, we've had to change our ways, but we've become a bit the, the example for others who will be following in a higher rate of analysis of what's going on in their systems. We're not alone in that. Doesn't that suggest that Seattle's got to do, be delivering more tuned water for other jurisdictions as well? And why would, why would it make sense for us to do this and not suggest, perhaps more than gently, that Seattle do this and deliver us water at the right level so that when it gets to us, it's what we need?
So what, the answer is yes. Other agencies are having to follow our example. The, what our data is showing, though, is that the water that's being delivered by SPU is at a higher residual chlor, has more residual chlorine within that water, and where it's, where the chlorine decay is happening is within our own distribution system. So that, the data is showing that it's our issue, not Seattle Public Utilities. And so that's why the booster chlorination project is in front of you tonight, because it's our, it's a city issue, it's a city of Mercer Island issue, not an SPU issue.
And that's, and I'm asking the question, that's because our system's older than other jurisdictions, so they don't get the same decay in chlorine content? And so they're okay with, with what they're getting at a lower level in the first place than us? Or is it, is it something else?
Yeah, it's our system that's responding differently than other jurisdictions. So Seattle, I know that has boosted their chlorine, they have changed their target chlorine parameters at the treatment plant, thanks to us. So they have boosted it, but boosting it at a higher level. As I mentioned before, there was a slide that our .6 was the target. Prior to the event, pre-event, our target, operational target was .5. And because we weren't monitoring throughout the system, we didn't know exactly how that was reacting. Now with more data points, we're actually seeing those changes in how we're responding and how Seattle actually, they're applying 1.5, and we're receiving it, we're getting it, our tanks at 1.5, how that's responding within our distribution system throughout, rather than just those four points that we were looking at.
And so is the issue then that there's another jurisdiction pulling water from that same pipe, that if they got, I mean, if Seattle boosted it to two, for instance, to get our level up to where we need to be after it's decayed, that would be too high a level for this other jurisdiction that has less old pipes and therefore less decline in the, is that what I should understand from that? Or is there some, why wouldn't we just ask Seattle to boost it to the level that works for us?
I am not sure how to answer that for Seattle. Maybe Derek could-
Well, I'll take a crack at it, and I would kind of turn the question sideways and say, well, what if Kirkland or Bellevue needed 3.0 milligrams per liter of chlorine in their system to mitigate a section of older town, older pipe in Bellevue, and that's what you had to receive? I think, I think-
That's what I'm asking.
Well, I know, but what would you do if you had too much in your system to your customers' desire? I think the important part here is that different infrastructure, or infrastructure is aging, and depending on what kind of pipes are in the ground at what time of, you know, what decade they were installed, they're, they're corroding. And then they're corroding because of what our chemistry on the inside of the pipe, but also the chemistry that is in the ground and the soil that the pipes are buried in. And I think what we're seeing here is that as that infrastructure ages and as capital improvement plans are less than what industry standard would suggest or the lifetime of the pipe, is that you need these tools and resources in order to do these adjustments within smaller service areas. And you look at Mercer Island, it's a good example, is that you have essentially a, an island that you get to manage your resources on there, and this is an effective tool for managing that resource. And you do have some unique situations with large linear feet of online cast iron pipe that you have that cities that are newer just don't have.
Jeff?
I just want to make sure I understand the science. So at the fundamental level, chlorination is treating symptom, water mains is treating cause. Meaning chlorination is making up for something. Do you know, do you understand what I'm asking? That basically we're putting this money into a, something that's treating a symptom of the fact that we're getting okay water, but our system is decaying it faster than everybody else?
I think it's important to think about-
Whereas the water mains themselves are actually the cause of why this thing is breaking down as fast as it is. I'm trying to make sure I understand the science so we can apply money and resources appropriately to the right thing, because treating symptoms is only of limited effectiveness over the long, long term.
Yeah, in effect, that's correct. Chlorine decays within the distribution system for many different reasons. We add chlorine, that's our layer of protection. It's a, it's a barrier that we use. Should something negatively impact water quality, we use that, that free chlorine to be able to react with something that gets in it. So we do receive chlorine from, chlorinated water from Seattle Public Utilities at adequate levels. As it enters our distribution system, many factors apply to it. One of those being aging pipes. Another, with the size of our reservoirs and tanks during different times of the year, if we're not flowing enough water, the water age actually adds to that as well. So that will have an, an impact or degrade chlorine. Dead-end water mains, because we're an island, we're unique, we're not like a lot of the districts, not a lot. Some districts that have the nice grids that are all looped together because of our geographic nature and the way our great islands laid out, that has an impact on the water mains as well. So adding the additional chlorine to it to reach those furthest points of the distribution system, there's multiple layers of why we would be adding it. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Dan and Benson?
So I've, I've got a bunch of stuff, and you're going to have to bear with me, because I'm confused. But let's, so and I'll break it off at some point and let others do it. So I, I want to visualize this. So we get a, we get a reading at Station 3A, which is all the way over in First Hill, which says that it's at .2, and alarm bells go off. So right now, you go out and you flush the system in order to address that. So now that you have this booster system in, tell me what you do. Do you go, do you still flush the system? Or do you call up someone, or you say, okay, turn on the switch, put that chlorine in, and we know that in, you know, a week or so, by the time it gets through our reservoir, that water will eventually get to First Hill? Is that what we do?
So that's a great question. Operationally, I, I talked with staff about this. So I'm going to take you down a road of a scenario where this booster chlorination system would be utilized. We talked in detail about working with Seattle Public Utilities and putting an analyzer, a chlorine measurement device, at the boat ramp. That's underway. We're currently working on relationships with SPU to get that installed. Once that's installed, those red dots that you saw on the map of- Once that's installed, those red dots that you saw in the map of where we are continuously monitoring, our operators will get a phone call and it says, Mercer Island, you have low chlorine coming onto the boat ramp. You have little or no chlorine. The operator can go on the computer and they can shut the water off to the island. Now, the idea is to reduce the risk of low chlorinated water to our residents. With that operational piece, staff can respond and determine whether or not, what the chlorine, low chlorine levels are and what is causing it. Depending on the storage, they may activate the booster chlorination system at that time so that all the residents on the island are receiving chlorinated water. If Seattle had a, their chlorination system go down for some reason, we weren't notified, we would be able to react and respond in a manner that is effectively quite a bit faster than what we have in the past. So in that scenario, the chlorination, the booster chlorination system would come online when we need it. So we would be operationally turning it on when we were received of a little or no chlorine coming from Seattle.
Okay, what about the example I just gave you?
So in the example that you just gave me, it would be an operational decision that has to be made off of data-driven decisions.
I just gave you the data.
So you gave me the data.
The data, you get a sample result that, it's a monthly sample, I believe you're taking at MI 3A or MI 15, which are two of your problem sites. And then you get, you get a call from Ann, whoever gets, you know, is monitoring the sampling and it's .2. So what do you do?
I'm not going to turn the system on immediately. I'm going to review the past historical data and find out what the best corrective action is. It might include adding booster chlorination to the system. However, we also need to be cognizant of what's happening in those areas where we are getting direct feed from Seattle. So perhaps that the booster chlorination may not be the answer in that scenario. So the other data that comes from it to make that decision to fire up that booster station would be it. Now to build on your question, if, if I were, had to see consistently low reads throughout my distribution system, through my other sample points and my 3A and my historical three areas that are showing low chlorine, then that would be a time when we would make a decision of how much boosted chlorine we need to add to the system.
But what's throwing me off Brian and then, and I'm not, I'm trying to get into an argument with you on this. The agenda bill says what you've got is, you've got three stations that you've, in your presentation, you've told us MI 3A, MI 15 and MI 11 are the three stations where you've gotten below .6 readings. And all three of those happen to be served by the reservoir. They're not served, they're not, they're in the mustard area, they're not in the blue or the green area. So those are stuff that's coming in, when, when they're served, when they're not being served by the reservoir, which presumably is the summertime, they're being served directly from SPU water, which you also just told us is supposed to come in at 1.5. So presumably if you're boosting the chlorine, you're not going to be boosting above 1.5. I think you would have some very unhappy customers here on Mercer Island if you started boosting above 1.5. So you've got the water, that the three stations that are, but, and all those three stations are treated from the reservoir. But I, I'm, I'm then left wondering if, if, if those are the three stations, if that's where we know we have problems and that's the only evidence we have that we've got ongoing problems, then why would we be trying to create a remedy which is designed to deal with parts of the system where we don't have problems? Which is the blue and the green because they're getting right off Seattle. And why, I mean, it would seem that chucking pucks, as Wendy referred to it, would be a very simple solution to deal with, you know, a bad, either flushing or chucking pucks. I mean, you said that since October, you've had one month of an FTE. But by my math is probably less than $10,000. And this is an $800,000 project. So I'm, I'm, I'm thinking, yeah, you've got a problem and I will concede to you that you've got a problem, but you've got, you've got a solution which seems a little bit heavy for the problem. But, and I, I've got other questions, but I'm starting to get, so Benson, go for it if you've got a question.
Brian, do you want to take a shot at responding to that first? Do you want to just let, punt to Benson for right now? You can have your choice on that.
If it's okay, Dan, I'll punt to Benson.
Okay, I'll give you time to, if you want to work it later, that's welcome too. Go ahead Benson.
Well, yeah, I'm actually going to work off Dan's comments, but I guess the question for, I think for office will be, so you have one proposal for this, for the booster station. And also we have a status, we can do the status quo. Okay, you guys have mentioned that that's potentially a problem, that we have a risk factors and, you know, you're trying to address those. Have you guys looked at any other options other than the booster station or the status quo? I mean, I think the point is that, you know, they, $10,000, that's a pretty large number. So that, you know, causes everybody to think twice whether or not that is the right way to go. And so I'm just wondering whether or not you folks in your analysis have looked at other ways of trying to achieve some of the problems or at least address some of the problems short of the booster station.
And maybe, let me try to just add to that question a little bit before you answer it. Because what I've come to appreciate from what you've shown us so far is the system's a lot more complicated than I thought it was before you started your presentation this evening. And it feels like, this is sort of where Dan is going, Benson's going, that this booster at the front end of the system that up, up chlorinates everything is a bit of a blunt instrument for you when what you actually have is a line over here that's working its way around the island or down the island without ever going through the reservoir and a different line that's, that's going to the reservoir and then having a long residence time. And if you just lift the level for everything, it, it feels like you, you don't have the granularity in your solution that you actually would wish you had so that you could, you could solve different pieces of the system in different ways.
So Brian and I can both sort of double up on this one too. So I think it's important to note that although it's coming out as a blunt instrument, that's not necessarily, as Brian said, it's not going to be our first response for a low chlorine. It's simply a tool within the toolbox that we have to use for the situation. We will, as you, as we've shown you tonight, we have a number of different data points. We have a number of different resources. And to answer Benson's question, our action plan since the boil water event has been our response. The way we've changed our operations have been our other tools that we've learned, that we've adapted to, that we are now using on a day-to-day basis to manage our water utility and manage the residual chlorine and clean drinking water for our community. So other options on the table, we're using them, we're implementing them. The unidirectional flushing program. We're looking, we've looked, we've looked in every crack and every corner within our utility. You have new staff members here at the table that took, put our arms around this issue and have looked at it with a fresh lens. And what the data is showing is that we have barriers within our system. And this is, it's a, it's not going to be something that we use every single day. It is simply a tool to mitigate risk. That if we do have poor water that comes to the island, or if we do have low chlorine rates across the island, we have something at our disposal to respond accordingly. So that we're not stuck back in 2014 where we're responding to a boil water event. We clear ourselves and we go back into another boil water event again. It's another tool to be used to manage our system.
And to build on that, and I think this might help answer some of the questions about the low chlorine at one area. Something to bear in mind as well, I talked about it operationally. When we, with the current plan that we have in place to change the operation to boost the chlorine, remember in the map and the graphic that I've thrown up there, that this is the current operation as it stands. This map all turns mustard once we turn the valves and we change the operation into the boosting mode. So that the water is coming from the one point source rather than the multiple point source. So operationally, we would change to boost the chlorine so that it wasn't looking in this format. It would all be mustard brown. So we would be using one pointed connection, one delivery point, reconfiguring the, the distribution system so that it can be delivered uniformly throughout.
Okay, that's important because that's different from just putting a chlorinator on the front end of a very complicated thing.
Yeah, so the idea, so there was an operational point. So I apologize for that. I was going to throw a, a picture of just all one mustard colored graphic up there, but I thought it might be not very useful.
Derek, did you want to add something you, you tried to get? Let's let you just say it in your own voice.
I'm in middle school here. I think these guys are right on. The only thing I would add is that if, when, when you're, I, I think the need of having a tool to add chlorine into your system in a precise predictable way is critical. So the way I was interpreting your question is are there other designs that could be considered to achieve similar objective given the complexity of the system? And as you were saying, Dan, is that what happens if it's down at the bottom of the island? What happens if, if it's up at the top of the island? Well, and one answer to the question is you could have multiple places where you're going to inject chlorine. You could do that. It would give you much more precise operational control about how you deliver that. But then you're building multiple buildings, you're duplicating your resources and you're probably spending more money. So what is happening, I think, with the proposal that is in front of you is that you do it at a place where you have the common point within your system. And then you use those multiple tools, as Brian was saying, to move water through the system using the economies of scale by injecting at that one location. That's what my last note said.
Okay.
So Derek, the, in the, in answer that Jason sent me this, this morning, he said that our, when the world returns to normal someday, we're, we're hoping to get back down to .25 again. And that I assume is consistent with Department of Health. That's consistent with your thinking as well, that, that in a, at some point we should be able to return down to .25.
So I think there's, I really need to challenge you to think outside the box on this one because you're not normal. You have lots of online. I'm just getting you back for the comment you had for the fellow. No, but, but, you know, when we talk about distribution systems and how do you know that chlorine is effective? And maybe I should back up even further, is that there are multiple reasons why you want to disinfect the system. One is source treatment to kill organisms that you know might be in your, in your water. And that's why Seattle disinfects at the treatment plant. They are actively killing biological activity in their distribution system to a very specific regulatory requirement. It has to meet that requirement before it leaves the treatment plant. Another reason why you're, you're using chlorine is to maintain distribution system water quality. And that's where all the variables come in, the, the age of pipe, the material of pipe, the hydraulics in the system, how it moves through the system. So I think when you use somebody saying the minimum residual is 0.25 and that's our target, I would suggest to you that that's your target on a nice clean pipe at the farthest reaches of your system. In order to get that residual in a nice clean pipe in the farthest reaches of your system, what do you have to have along a pipeline all the way back to the source?
And I understand that. I, I think that, what I, what I was saying is that at some day that, you know, when MI 3A comes in at .25, people won't get all upset because that's an acceptable level that, from a health standpoint. Now someday, you know, in a, in a perfect world, Department of Health and, and federal authorities will agree that you can use UV to disinfect and not just chlorine. I mean, you're, which is, it's because a lot of systems around the world use UV. And it's only because we're determined to have to measure residual chlorine that we don't let UV do, which is probably a heck of a lot more effective than chlorine anyway. It's another discussion.
Another discussion. I would say, well, if you're, Seattle's Cedar Treatment Plant, which you get water from, treats water with UV. It's one of the three disinfectants that are being used, so.
Let's, let Wendy have a shot here and come back.
So we have a design. Jason, DC construction. Would this be online by the end, oh, sorry. You said we'll be done, done, done with all of this by the end of 2018. So this would be 2017. We do more evaluation, we keep working with our friends at Department of Health and monitor the chlorine levels and maybe put this water boil advisory behind us once and for all.
I would love to put the boil water advisory behind us. So currently, so today we've done feasibility. So as Bruce has mentioned, our system is very complex. It's not just one or two pipes we're dealing with. It's, it's a complex system. And so we've done feasibility, that's where today, that's where, that's where the number for the CIP development is, is from. We expect that that number could be modified. There's some things that are going on right now. I've mentioned our conversation with SPU. We're trying to work with SPU to try and piggyback off of their utilities and their near box to save a cost on installation for this. So we expect that that number will be modified by the time it comes back to the council in the October, November budget meetings. The, but because of that, the design, the design will continue because we have to move forward the design this year. It'll carry you into the first part of next year. So that's why you see a phased construction between the 17 and 18 is because by the time we finish design, we'll go into the first part of construction in 17 and it'll wrap up in 18. So by the end of 2018, we should be done with this response.
We also look at this main replacement schedule and rate? Or is that sort of a whole separate issue? And I think if we're going to do this, we need to also look.
It's, it's part of our, it's part of our CIP process. And I don't, I'm going to look to Ann if she knows what, how many miles were proposed in the next biennium. But it's definitely part of the rate conversation, it's part of our CIP and then we can, we can definitely talk about it.
Yeah, we can, we can be prepared to bring that, that level of information on the CIP back on August 1st when we bring the water system plan to you. That would be a really good conversation to have. But again, the, it's safe to, it's safe for me to say, but we're probably going to need to look at, if, if main replacement is a high priority for the council, it's safe for me to say that we're going to need to look at how we ramp up that, that rate of replacement over the next many years. Well, we will have to pay for it somehow, yes.
How much per mile, about how much per mile about are you, the average?
Cost per mile?
Yes.
Francie's jumping up in the back row.
It does vary, but I, yeah, I don't know that I have a number.
For the record, Francie Lake, Deputy Finance Director. And I, I don't have a per mile number for you, but what I can tell you is that the 0.4% that we're replacing right now, we're spending $1 to $3 million a year. So if you were to double that, we would go to $4 to $6 million a year and rates would increase quite a bit.
Thank you. Other questions? Seeing none. I, so you're looking for direction from us, which I assume at this point is carry on or redirect in some fashion?
Correct.
Okay. Council, I'll just try. I had a bunch of questions coming in. I feel like they've been answered. My inclination at this point is to say, carry on. Anyone wish to enter into a discussion about a different direction they think we ought to take?
Well, I, I may end up getting there, but I'm, I'll just, I'm concerned that the basis for this decision is, is that, there are two rationales given for this originally, or three rationales. One was that Department of Health is requiring this and that, that's not the case. That there's, there, well, Derek already spoke to that. The second was that we got parts of our distribution system that are not serviced by the reservoir. But then we know that that part of the system is getting water directly from SPU, which is at, coming in at 1.5. So there shouldn't be a boosting issue on that. And then in fact, then we've got the three stations which are showing problematic results of below .6. All those are getting serviced off the reservoir, according to the map that Brian gave us. And, but because they're at the very, at where they are in our system, in effect, it would take probably about, you know, if, if you got a bad reading today, by the time you put in the, you spike the chlorine at this injection system, the way our system is designed, as I understand, it would be a matter of days and maybe more than a week before that water actually made it to those ends of the system. Cause it goes into the reservoir and then it's, it's at parts of our system which are at ends of distribution lines like First Hill. And then, so what I, I'm just guessing, but my guess is Brian's going to end up flushing that part of the system anyway just because he needs to do an immediate fix of a problem rather than wait for a week for the. rather than wait for a week for the, for the chlorine levels to go up. So, I'm, I'm just concerned that, I, I understand, I understand why staff, you know, that this is a, it's a tool, it's a nice tool to have. But I, I'm a little bit concerned that there's not a case that's been made for the problem that this will solve. Because the base, I mean, the gist of the agenda bill is we've got distribution sys, we've got, we've got parts of distribution system which aren't serviced by the reservoir. And, but, and so that's not solved by this because that's coming in directly from SPU. And we've got three stations which are self-locating our distribution system where this isn't going to provide the immediate solution. And then, so, I'm, I'm a little bit, I'm, I'm thinking that we're spending $800,000 when, you know, I, it's probably not the best use of the $800,000. And that I.
Let me try and frame your question a little differently and a lot shorter. You talked about putting in this system, but you also talked about an operational change that runs all the water through the reservoir rather than having it go to different parts of the system first. Why would you not just make the operational change and continue to huck pucks at the reservoir?
Go ahead.
So, the operational change, again, if we receive a level that coming from SPU, there is not adequate chlorine, we will be able to respond to that. Operationally, so, there's a couple of different scenarios in your question that can happen operationally. One, SPU's chlorine level could be low or nonexistent. So, at that point, the booster chlorination station, we would change the operation to boost chlorine or actually put chlorine in the system. And then, secondly, by changing the operation to just go to that one single point of the, where all the SPU water comes into one point, we can change that operation, but we know that the decay in our system is greater than what SPU is giving us at certain times of the year. And we know that because of our surveillance monitoring. So, if we switch it to what SPU is giving us, we know that that may not be quite adequate as in Dan's comment that just 3A is low. We may need to switch that and run it through the entire system for a period of time to boost that up. Did that answer that?
I, you left me confused, to be quite honest.
Trying to add, why I can't really run water from the.
Yeah. If you can turn everything into mustard.
If I could turn everything into mustard.
You've said you, you can't operationally make everything flow through the tank. So, so the tank becomes then upstream of everything in the system. Am I right that that was what you were saying?
Yes.
You could operationally do? And if you can do that, then it seems to me that it doesn't matter if you put the chlorine in when it comes on island or you put the chlorine in at the tank. Both are upstream of any customers.
And our data shows that currently, SPU is not providing enough chlorine at certain times of the year to reach the furthest end of the distribution system inside help.
Right. And that's, so my question still becomes boosted at, a booster thing in the, in the boat launch, thank you, or boosted in the tank. From a customer standpoint, it's all the same because either way, you've boosted it.
Correct.
Before it got to them.
Right. Before it went to the furthest point, so.
Before it went to any point.
In a nutshell, if, in that scenario, turning everything to mustard, I like using that, turning the whole map to mustard, that without the chlorination system, the chlorine levels fall off, degrade, it decays within our distribution system at a higher rate where we would need to boost the chlorine level to reach those furthest points.
Derek, we're going to you because I know you asked. I have the notes again, so, what do you got? What do you think?
Well, I, I think going back to, we're throwing pucks in the storage tank effective at raising the chlorine residual in a predictable, measurable and controllable way. And I think the data would show that no. In, in bulk, it is. But what you have constantly happening is the tank is filling, the tank is emptying. You've got these little pucks of high chlorine concentration thrown on the bottom of the reservoir. And when your booster pump turns on to shoot water up to the hill, that's going to, depending on where the intake is on the pump station from the tank, is going to suck either heavily chlorinated water or not chlorinated water. By putting this as a flow proportional paste chemical injection system that's designed to do that, you're going to have far more control on the situation.
Cool. Okay. Got that. Okay. So, I'm back to, yeah, I understand. Did that help you or you?
Well, I, I understand what you're saying. I mean, and that's, you know, because that, if you recall, two years ago, we were talking about that, we were talking about putting mix masters inside the tanks as the way to deal with the, the issue you just addressed. And I don't know what happened to the mix masters, the idea that, I mean, you had, I think, yeah, you'd even gone so far as to locate them in, in California at the time to, to see if they were available because we thought we might have to get them in a rush.
Yeah. And Derek might have to help me with jogging my memory, but I, I think what we determined is that, that investing in a, in a mixing system was probably not the best use of our resources at the time because didn't need, we didn't really need them on an ongoing basis. My recollection, so my, and my recollection of, of the chucking of the pucks because it went on for as long as it did, it's really, it wasn't really a predictable use of the chemical in the tanks that we have. And even with, even with mixers in our tanks, we may not have been able to come up with a predictable and a reliable chlorinated system in those tanks. Where was I going to go with this? I, you know, I, I under, I, I think I understand some of the reluctance when, at least today, we have a tar, an area that we can point to and say, this is the area of the island that we're having the problems and, and this boosted system may or may not help that. It probably will help that. And so, then that might make that part of our island system better and no longer need to be boosted. But is my, as soon, my, my fear is that as soon as we correct First Hill, we're going to start to see similar problems in other parts of the island. And we can chase this dog around the island for as many years as we want to. But again, I don't, I'm sitting from a place where it doesn't feel like that's a great use of the limited resources that we have. And those limited resources are, are the staff resources that have to either get up on top of the tank to chuck the pucks or to, to chase the problem around the island, to, to inject chlorine at a specific location and then, you know, move off to a new location. But.
Does it, is it any less expensive to put the chlorine injection system up at the reservoir rather than just be at the entry point of the reservoir and then putting it down at the boat launch?
So.
I mean, because it shouldn't be, if you're, if you're going mustard, the whole, the whole system going mustard, everything's being served off the reservoir anyway, as, as Bruce was saying. So, where you inject, as long as you inject it before the tanks, it should make no difference whatsoever. I can understand Derek's point that injecting it into, that taking a bottle of Clorox and throwing it in the tank is probably not the best way to, to mix things. But if you, as long as you inject it in the pipe just before the, the reservoir, you get the exact same result.
And so, that is exactly the plan.
Yes.
So, at this point, at our conceptual design, that we will utilize portions of the reservoir site to house the station and use the property that we currently have to put the station there and then pipe to that point to turn the whole island mustard.
Do you have an issue there storing chlorine? Is it chlorine gas or what are you, are you using for chlorine?
A good question. We, at this point, we've gone through with our consultant, sourcing out the different types of methods and applications. And at this point, we are doing further development on, and research on the best application of either onsite hypochlorite generation or perhaps a sodium hypochlorite high test tablet supersaturator.
Get a chuck a puck into the pipe instead of chuck a puck into the.
All right.
Three times for fast.
I think council members, carry on or redirect? Because I'm, I know Dan's maybe on the fence, maybe not, but I'm looking down here to see where others are.
I'm, I'm in support of allowing them to proceed. I guess, you've answered a number of my questions I had, but, you know, I hearken back to this idea that, I, I think it's great to have this additional tool and you guys have described the benefits of this tool. I just, just really wonder how often we're going to use this $800, $10,000. I mean, when we need it, it'll be great, but I'm just, you know, you never know. I mean, so it's, I suppose it's good to have it as insurance, but I, I just really wonder, you know, again, you know, how many times we're going to, you, I need it. I mean, because as, as you mentioned, Brian, when a problem arises, you're not going to be flicking the switch off right away. You're going to be looking at it and see if there's other ways to deal with a problem. So, I guess that's my only hesitation, but, you know, at this point, I'm certainly willing to have you guys continue to look at, look at this installation of this station, so.
Wendy, Derek?
Utilities are expensive and everybody takes them for granted until something goes wrong. So, I applaud you for the response and doing all this great work to get to here. And as much as I don't want to spend $800, $10,000 on insurance policy, it's much better than having to deal with a second boil advisory, boil water advisory two or three years later. So, thank you for the solution. Thank you for working with our consultants, SPU, DOH, City Staff. I mean, it's been an army responding to this and if this is the final step, let's just, let's move on.
Sure.
Yeah. I'm kind of in love Benson, Wendy lines where this feels difficult because it's such an expensive power tool to just have as an additional tool, expensive insurance. I'll look forward two weeks as we learn about the water system because it still feels to me like we are addressing something that is the cause, the symptom, where the wa, the age of our water system is really the, a very important thing to focus on. And, but at the same time, water is probably one of our number one issues that we have to do and we have to do everything we can on those big ones. So, keep going.
I'm on carry on as well.
Yeah. And I'll go for carry on, but I have one last question. So, we're spending $800, $10,000 on this. What, what insurance have you got from SPU? They're not going to flush a line again and, and do what they did last time?
So, we have, they've created an SOP. We have, they've, they've, anytime they change their operational controls, they have to notify our utilities operator prior to doing that. So, we have that from them. So, we get prior, we get prior notification from SPU before they change valves.
So, that's when you turn on the system to insulate us from when they flush the lines on us?
Well, we have their analyzer downstream before they do that, right? So, and that, I assume is a fairly instantaneous response sort of analyzer. It's not sample and take it away in few days.
Yeah. We have learned a lot of things that, particularly where those red dots were on that map where we're continuously monitoring. So, one of the upgrades, working with Seattle Public Utilities, monitoring that water as soon as it comes across the East Channel. So, we are made aware of it long before it gets to the reservoir site. So, yeah.
And out of that, it's a direct phone call to SPU if there's bad water coming across the island as well too, so.
All right. Well, thank you very much and particularly to our DOH folks, Derek and, is it Brietta? Thank you. You got to sit quietly and avoid the table, but thank you for being here. And staff members, Brian and Jason, thank you. Okay. Council members, I'll do the next rule. All right. So, we go now to Agenda Bill 5202, I-90 Loss of Mobility Negotiations Update. And Kirsten, I think you're going to run us through this, right?
All right. Good evening, Council. For the record, Kirsten Taylor, your Assistant City Manager. And I want to give you a brief status update on the I-90 Loss of Mobility negotiations tonight. We, we have not given the, you know, an update like this for several months and I think that we've been receiving increased questions. So, we wanted to start with this update and then I'll also talk about potential additional communications that we'll be looking for. So, some background, as you will recall, we had significant public outreach last fall. There were a series of meetings with the Mercer Island public to identify and discuss mobility issues of concern to the community. And those, those identified mobility issues for both, we identified mobility issues for both the construction period of light rail and then after light rail is in effect. We determined that our Mercer Island goals are, here's a few, a few of our major goals are to retain access to the new R8A HLV lanes. That's definitely a community goal. We want to have limited impacts on town center mobility throughout construction and after light rail is in place. We want convenient commuter parking for Mercer Island residents. And we also want better last mile connections to the light rail so that people have alternatives to driving to light rail. And we want to make sure that there's no greater commuter bus impact than we have today, than the community is already adjusted to. So, some of our current efforts that have been taking place over the last six months is that our, our council members have been engaging key representatives at local, regional, state and national levels so that they understand and respect our historic agreements regarding I-90 and mobility. Also, the mayor has been to a meeting in Washington DC to ensure that the city's case is fully understood by all necessary federal agencies and our state's delegation in Washington DC. So, those are two very important current efforts. We've noticed with communications, there've been an increase in public questions because it has been a number of months since we have had updates to the community, you know, the questions, what's going on? And so, we would like to increase the communications going out to the community. We know we need to give accurate, clear information about our past documents and agreements. And we also need to have consistent and timely outreach efforts to all residents about any ongoing efforts that we're making. And we have limited communications availability with our halftime communications manager. We feel that this is a bigger effort and we, we really could benefit from having some additional communications dollars devoted to communicating with the community over something that, you know, we understand is, is a top priority to this community. So, one of the things that I would like to ask tonight is that we, we're asking for a thumbs up on spending $10,000 to increase our communications out to the public. We have interviewed some communications firms and would like to utilize one of those to make sure that our communications are, are clear, easily accessible, pushed out to the community so that we're making sure that the whole community has access to this information. So, that's my, my brief update.
Maybe Kirsten, you could put that in the context of other folks we're using as resources to work through this, this whole negotiation that we're going through with Sound Transit and Washington folks? Because it's, it's obviously not just a communications effort, it's much more than that we're engaged in.
So, the council has funded monies for Washington to advocates to assist us in, in our efforts and outreach and with our delegations and, and all of the local, regional, state, national agencies. We also have legal resources that we've been using those dollars for and engineering resources so that we can make sure that we are getting our own analysis of any of the engineering information we're getting from Sound Transit.
That's one of the things we ran into in the past was that when we needed an analyst done, Sound Transit did the analysis and of course, results weren't necessarily the results we would have, would have sought or the question wasn't framed quite the way we would frame it. So, important to have our, our team in place, I think, to, to get through all of this.
Yes.
Uh, council member, questions?
So, I'm struggling with the timing of this. While we're still trying to figure things out, I'm not sure we need to figure out how to spend this money tonight, or even to retain somebody until we know. So, I'm thinking about timing and deliverables before we really know what the messages are.
One of the things that we want to make sure that we have readily available is on our website, the documents and information so that people can understand our historic documents. And that's going to take some, you know, significant additional effort to make sure that it's available and accessible and understandable by the general public. So we'd like to, and that, no matter what results of negotiations, that's going to be an important, essential product. So that's something we'd like to get started on now. And also, looking at what some of the community questions are. We understand that there's an increase of questions on Nextdoor and other questions coming into council members or into staff. So we'd like to take those questions and develop some Q and A or FAQs so that those questions aren't just answered to a couple individuals, but are available across the whole community.
And I think the sense is that better to begin to plan now than to wait until we're at the moment of saying, okay, we've got to do a whole bunch of communicating with this. How are we going to do it? So the thought is, I think, to be a bit proactive. This is about planning to communicate as much as it is about communicating.
A combination of those things.
Yeah.
And we've been caught in the past with having something moving quickly with other city initiatives, and we don't want to be behind in getting information to the community. We'd really like to be out in front so that, you know, people aren't saying, well, when are you going to get us this information? When are you going to get us this information? And that we can point to it, have it ready to go. Because the community really cares about this topic, and the interest is growing.
Jeff, and then Benson.
Yeah, so Kirsten, this person that you would theoretically hire would work for you, who will report directly to you?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I'm very, you know, I'm very pro-communications, I'm very pro-being proactive about thinking about it. And I would just say that I hope the approach here is not one of sort of a one-off, look at this particular issue, but I know that if you think about town center, if you think about this, what we've got on residential, what we've got coming down with potential levy lift lifts, we have many opportunities to improve how we get input from our community, how we communicate back to our community. And so I hope that whatever you do, when we read the proposal, that it addresses not specifically, this is the transit communication plan, but this is the, how we do better at communicating with the public plan.
And I think-
So it provides a template for every situation that we see coming down in the next 12 months.
Yes.
Benson?
I certainly agree with what Councilmember Sanderson has said. And I guess, as far as the initial $10,000 or whatever amount, when can we expect, I mean, I guess, it sounds like the scope of work obviously has to be, still being developed. So I guess if one plan is to develop some sort of strategy or some sort of way of communicating or pushing out the message, as you mentioned, when do we get to see that again? What's your timeframe for when the council can see this plan that's being developed?
We are, what we wanted, our next step is to determine what our communications manager, Ross Freeman, can do, and how to best complement what he can do and what other resources we need. So, we anticipate having that developed in the next few days. And then, depending on what council would like, we can come back to you with products, or we can come back to you with a plan. Would like to get working on the products immediately, but if you prefer, we could come back, you know, with the plan of action as a first step.
Let's keep going with questions, and we'll, you know, sort of come back to what Kirsten's offering as a couple of options here after we get through that. Jeff?
I'll make it a question. So there's an upcoming, like in Jeopardy? The, there's an upcoming scope of work for the residential project.
Yes.
Are you explicitly working through, and that will require a communications and input strategy, are you explicitly thinking about the ties between that, you know, so I assume they're going to come to us with a scope of work there with a potential communications person? So are you, this is a form of a question, are you thinking through?
You know, we haven't tied those two work projects together, but we certainly can explore that, and just see what we can learn from one to use with the other effort.
Okay. Wendy?
Can you just remind me what else Ross is working on? I know he's part-time sustainability and part-time communications, and I know this is special, and I know our residents are keenly tuned into this, and there are lots of communication channels, and I know we want to get in front of the messaging. And Ross, and our interim city manager, and you seem like very capable people to help us with that as well as including some of the resources we've already put on this project. So I guess, tell me a little bit about what our staff would be doing. Are we going to just hand this off with the guidelines?
No, we intend to work very closely. I always want to learn from a process that we go through, and I definitely want to take whatever we develop or a style of communication or a plan of communication, and then apply that across any other efforts that we are making as a city. And right now, Ross is going to meet tomorrow with our potential consultant to work through some of those details, to see what he can do, what he has capacity to do. We stretch him really thin. He has a lot of capabilities, but we ask him to do a lot of things. And we are looking at this as a big push to make sure that we are getting information readily available that's, you know, easily understood, just excellent communications ready for the public. So I don't want to say we don't have some skills and abilities in-house, we absolutely just don't have the time to make sure that we're doing this really right. And I think the community wants us to do this, this one really right.
Okay. And Jeff? So, the question was asked, or Kirsten offered, or maybe Benson, you sort of framed it up, what comes next? Do you want to offer what you'd like to see come next?
Well-
I'm sorry. Kirsten, you mentioned products versus the plan, or action plan, I guess. So, again, remind me, when you say products, what are you thinking of?
I'm thinking of getting a prototype for a page, having Q and As or FAQs developed, having, making sure that we've got just all of introductory pieces to some of our historical documents. I mean, those are just a few of the products that we want to get moving. We also do want to have a plan in place of how we're presenting information, and so that when, throughout negotiations, we have results to present to the community, that we are ready to go, that we aren't caught short trying to catch up and go, oh, how do we now communicate to our community around this? So, we definitely want to have those plans in place as well, just because we know that the community's going to want to know as soon as possible when we-
Do you have a sense of how long it will take you to develop the products? You know, I guess, you know, obviously, everybody is looking at the clock, and they, you know, looking at mid-2017 as the time when the Senate rode away.
We want to just, we want to move on this and get products done in the next month or so.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And then presumably, you can still be working on the plan when you're doing the products?
Yes, at the same time, yes.
So, it's not going to be, okay.
Well, I think it is important to get the products out. I mean, obviously, there is some information that'd be useful to have the community have the same basis of understanding. And so, so I'm certainly in favor of that. But I certainly, given the timeframe, and it's July, and, you know, perhaps less than a year, and, you know, we, you know, I know that negotiations are going on, you know, things are still in a state of flux. So, you know, I guess there is a sense of urgency. So, I wouldn't want to wait too long to get the action plan back to the council for its review, so.
So what you'd like to see is this come back to the council, then, I mean, I'm going to suggest in just a little while, spoiler alert, that we do not have our second August meeting, which everybody's already expecting. But that means that we probably would want to make this decision at our first August meeting, which is just a couple of weeks, rather than wait all the way to the beginning of September. So I think, Kirsten, are you comfortable suggesting that we bring back something with a little bit more specificity to the first August meeting then?
We can certainly do that.
Okay.
I'd like to just get going. I would, just, you know, and start developing things now, but if the council is more comfortable seeing this revisited.
Yeah. Pam?
I just want to ask a question, make sure I'm very, very clear. Because what I heard was a scope versus a plan. The plan would be an outcome, the scope would be an input. So I, what we're bringing back on August 1st is the products, or at least a plan? Or do you, are you talking, because if it's the scope, then we can't get started.
I guess I'm thinking in terms of the plan.
Thank you. Clarification.
So we may not be able to have a plan, and we would have to have that prepared for an agenda bill by next week. So that's not realistic. But we could certainly come back in September, the first meeting in September, with the plan and work products, and present that to council.
Wendy?
Just going to channel Dave here for a minute and just say I'd love to build some in-house capacity for these communications issues. And Mary and Jeff, we have a lot of issues that a lot of people care about and want to hear about, and in this digital age, we can't wait, so I get that. So I'm supportive of figuring out how to get this communication issue going for this I-90 mobility. But I really, really want to make sure we don't keep hiring consultant after consultant after consultant. We did this for the town center, we're going to have to look at this for single-family residential, budget issues, capital budgets. I mean, we need to sort of build this strength in-house. We have good people. Let's clear some of the decks and prioritize so we can make sure this gets done and stays in-house.
I hear a suggestion that we should have two of Ross.
At least one.
Oh, one of them.
Yeah.
I just want to second Wendy's motion that, I mean, communications is underdone here. And we need to really think about our in-house capacity in FTE terms for doing a great job of this. I think we should be moving forward on this, but I would say in my little two-second wine rant is that I hope we've done, I don't think we've done the right post-mortem on the town center visioning process, because we hired a consultant there, we spent a lot of money on communications. Do we have a good sense, I'm doing this as a statement, instead of a question, since it's statement time, of analyzing, you know, how effectively we communicated with the public in that process to feed into this one?
Yes.
And that's critical to me, that we send that, or do that post-mortem on the whole process, but specifically the communication, where we spent communication money, and I want to make sure that anything we learned there gets applied here.
Yes.
And then so forth, and so forth.
I agree.
You had Pam seriously taking notes while you were saying that, so the point came across.
Let me pile on on that a little bit. I don't know how many of you have been watching on Nextdoor, the city getting trashed for Calkins Landing and Calkins Point and the series of posts on-
Somewhat confused posts, because of the name of it.
Yeah, but it is, in my, without commenting on the posts themselves, it's unfortunate the city doesn't have the capability to respond to those posts. I mean, it's just, because I think there's probably a very good response, and it's, and I mean, interestingly, there's a couple of citizens who have put in some good responses, but it should be the city explaining what was done there, and, because those are beautiful projects. And instead, the 99% of the islanders who probably have not even gone down there, the only thing they're hearing about it is being trashed by a few people who are against it. And that's unfortunate. I mean, but the city needs to be able to get out front on this stuff, and Ross needs to be able to get out front on this stuff now already, because we just, we're getting beaten up for absolutely no reason whatsoever without any effort to explain what we're doing as a city.
And we're in an environment where Ross can't even see, I mean-
Well, he can see them.
He can't see them.
No.
He can't see them.
Not unless he-
Unless he initiates, and he can't see them.
Yes.
We're going to fix that. Copy and paste.
We can fix that. I mean, it's, I mean, we have another person in the city who is getting all the posts, we know that. So it's doable. It's definitely doable.
All right. Kirsten, I think you've got what you need at this point.
So I'm, what I heard is that we are going to come back with a plan and products at the beginning of September.
Okay. Council? Okay. All right. We're going to move on to other business. Councilmember absences, we have two. Two of our councilmembers apparently are in Florida enjoying the warmth there of the Orlando summer.
Microsoft absences.
Yes, Microsoft absences. Is there a motion to excuse Debbie and Dave?
Move that we excuse Debbie and Dave.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Upcoming absences, new upcoming absences of which we should be aware.
I'd yourself.
And by the way, that's on the planning schedule. If you have read your planning schedule, you would have seen that I announced that quite some time ago, so.
I'm impressed.
There you go.
I'm shown as a question mark on August 1st, that's because we flying, I mean, going to Tuesday, I like Tuesdays as our day, I've given that input. I'm flying back from something on August 1st. Plane arrives like at 6:30, I can come straight here. So I'm late, but, so I'm in a council member lateness.
Sorry.
Council member tardiness.
Okay.
So I will get here as soon as I can that day, but I will be late.
All right, and I will be gone, so I'll expect you to cover for me when you get here. Planning schedule, Pam, do you have any insights to offer here?
Well, I was going to talk about the residential development code revision, but that was-
I stole the thunder, sorry about that.
Yes, you did. So I don't need to mention that I was coming back. And I'm hopeful that there will be a decision tonight telling us what you're going to do on the 15th. I want to point out the CenturyLink cable franchise, and I think you're, we're going to be trying to get some advance information to you before that meeting. And I believe, Ally, if I got this right, that the residential development standards on September 19th, that Scott pulled those, am I right about that? Or do you know?
He was reviewing the planning schedule this morning and saw that on there as a study session, and doesn't know how it actually got onto the planning schedule as a study session on that date. So, that's, so he removed it from there. I think his plan is to, after the planning commission meeting tomorrow night, bring back a timeline for approval and review of the standards.
So that is something to cross off your calendar. That's it.
Okay.
So, one comment, one observation. October 3rd is the first day of Rosh Hashanah, which we have traditionally not had council meetings on the high holidays. So it just, it's, I believe you could put it on the 4th though, because actually, that's after the end of Rosh Hashanah, if you wanted to, move it to the 4th, I believe, the, then that's the night of the 2nd, and the 3rd, and the night of the, yeah. So ideally, in, out of tradition, we would move that to October 4th if that's possible.
Jeff, would that suit you, both because it's a Tuesday?
Am I about to be outed for my non-observational observation?
No, he's offering to move it to a Tuesday.
I think, I love Tuesdays as our day, and I thought this, you know, as we view whether we move permanently to Tuesdays. But I'm, I would move it to Tuesday out of respect for the holiday.
So that's one thing, if that works on people's schedule.
So, no surprise here, I'm not Jewish, but when you say Rosh Hashanah, October 3rd, is the first day of the holiday, logically, it then believes that the next day would be the second day of the holiday, and therefore, that doesn't work. Statistics help me understand.
It ends at sundown, and basically, people who observe, go to temple, would go to temple on the 3rd and the 4th in the morning, and that would pretty much be done by the middle of the day on the 4th.
Okay. So doing it the evening, having a council meeting on the evening of the 4th does not, does not conflict with the holiday?
Yeah, the wrath of the gods will not come down upon us.
All right.
And you've written in your book of laws.
Okay.
So, that's one thing. Second thing, and, and I'm not expecting you to know the answer to this, Pam, but one of the things that we hopefully are going to schedule on this is the Michael lease and as my understanding is that it's sitting, that they've now submitted everything to DSG, that what we, this predates you and it's.
Well, yeah, I do have an update on that if you want it though.
Yeah, well, I'm just curious, at some point, are we going to know when it's going to come back to the council, is the other question?
Yes, I asked Scott that and he, the, the SEPA review is going on now, they're reviewing it now and the amendment that is required is going to go back through the planning commission and is expected to come back to the council. He just said the fall, so I don't know if that's September or October or even November, but it's supposed to come back in the fall. What I don't know is how the short plat process dovetails with that or if there is an need.
There's no, there's no short plat process. What, what I think he's referring to is a zoning, is a P-zone issue, but can Carrie correct me if I'm wrong? If I recall, what we passed before is that once the SEPA review is completed, then the lease itself is supposed to come back to the council, that the lease, action on the lease does not depend upon the P-zone being completed.
Scott's actually the better person to talk about the sequencing, but it's my understanding that they received a letter stating that more materials needed to be submitted as part of the SEPA review and there actually is a subdivision component required under RCW 58.17, so their team is looking at that as well. Regarding the Code Text Amendment, that as our interim city manager mentioned, is needing to go to the planning commission most likely, but I, again, I don't know about exact sequencing, I'll need to check with Scott and we can give the council an update about that.
And all I was saying, if, if my recollection is correct, that there were a bunch of things, we all know there's several hoops they still need to jump through, but the sequencing that I recall the council passed and when we did this before was to say that once SEPA was done, then the lease would come back. And then that was the only, the only condition precedent to bringing the lease back was SEPA. Now, obviously, SEPA has to be finished, but I don't think anything else was a condition precedent.
It will come back to council, again, I just can't give more specifics about timing. SEPA review is still underway.
I understand that, I'm, so I'm just saying that some point once, but you answered one question that they've, they've been asked to provide more information, so the SEPA review is continuing, but at some point, we just need to make sure that, I mean, you make your own determination of what we passed before, but I, I believe that it says that once SEPA's done, it's supposed to come back to us.
Understood, it will be coming back, again, I just can't tell you exactly when.
Other? Wendy?
So, regarding that and this new Protect Our Parks Initiative, will you also provide information about how that initiative, if they get signatures, will impact our review of the lease or legality? I don't know how those two are in conflict or concert with each other.
That's not something I can speak to tonight and the 90-day clock has started with regard to Parks Initiative 2.0, if you will, so we'll see and there's definitely going to be more to follow about that as more information becomes known. Again, I just can't speak to that.
I'm happy you understood one, two, three, four.
The interplay between the two, I understand. You're welcome.
Anything else, planning schedule-wise? I've got two things.
Mayor Bassett, did we make the decision to move the meeting in October?
Yeah, you're just, you're, you're cutting in on.
Well, there was a lot of conversation and no decision.
Going in right now. So, with that, I need a motion to cancel or to do away with our second August meeting, if that is the will of the council, I believe.
Hi, I'll see you guys when I move that we cancel that second August meeting.
Second?
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, very well, you have the second meeting of August off. And then the other bit of, I guess maybe would be under reports, but I'll put it here is, and everyone should be aware, that National Night Out is coming on August 2nd and for our new council members, this is an opportunity to get out and schmooze with the public. It's also an opportunity for us to have our, the public interact with our public safety officers and other staff and in this day and age of some really horrible things happening out there in other parts of the country, it's a particularly nice moment for us to build strong ties between our public and our public safety folks. And Chief, if you want to add anything to that, you certainly may.
For the record, Ed Holmes, your police chief, the only thing I would add is that at the Sculpture Garden, we're going to have a gathering there from 5 to 8 that night and yes, in honor of councilmember Sanderson, we will have hot dogs and there's even a possibility Nancy Stewart will be there here for some music that she'll perform sponsored by the Mercer Island Library. So, we may also go visit specific neighborhoods also, but certainly for those who don't have a neighborhood organized, for us to come visit the Sculpture Garden on the 2nd, which is two weeks from tonight, from 5 to 8. Be a lot of fun and as the mayor mentioned, a good chance for the police officers and firefighters, for public safety officers to interact with the public and to continue to build on the relationships we have and continue to get to know each other better through an event like this. So, everybody is encouraged, not only welcome, but encouraged to attend.
Very good, thank you. Okay.
Mayor Bassett, my, my question was about October's meeting.
Oh, I thought you were after the October meeting.
No, I, I didn't know if there was a formal move of that meeting.
Oh, um.
I don't need a motion, I just need to know if that was the agreement, that it's going to be on the 4th, Tuesday the 4th.
That's not in our, yes, October 4th, thank you. Yeah, thanks for giving us, kneel down on that. All right, board appointments, we have none. Councilmember reports. Benson, you want to start?
I just have two things. First of all, you know, a number of us attended the Calkins Point ribbon-cutting ceremony, that was, it was a great event. The, the improvements are just fantastic and I just, you know, looks like a great venue for an outdoor wedding, so I'm going to.
You're going to marry.
No, 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 no. I think my daughter's always looking for an outdoor venue. But anyways, so I just wanted to certainly extend my appreciation for the folks, the park staff and friends of Luther Bro Bank and all the other folks that made that happen. The second thing is that I attended the Public Issues Committee meeting this past, I guess last week and I'm going to hand this, I'll give this at the end of the meeting to our city manager. Basically, they had a discussion regarding the King County 2017-2018 budget, this is a high-level overview, but they focused on the general fund and that they're predicting or projecting a $50 million deficit right now and what the Sound Cities Association wants the cities to do, because apparently the county people have identified a number of things that they could cut to help, cut, help address the deficit, but these things would affect the cities and they wanted to get an idea of what the different cities, what their appetite was for certain cuts. And so, they're looking for input from all the different cities. So, I'm going to give this to our city manager and hopefully she can share that with the council members and with staff and people can weigh in and so, it'll be an opportunity for all the PIP members to basically chime in and, you know, share what their cities have to say. So, that's it.
Okay. Wendy?
I'll just say I'm looking forward to the library's grand reopening this Saturday. See y'all there.
You stole it out.
It's the library board. So, it's further than the.
No, it's okay. Yeah, the, the library is opening 9:30 to speeches. One of our state senators will be speaking, one of our King County council people and me, so, and a number of people related to the library. There's a sneak preview that we've been invited to, so that's exciting. I give kudos, my kudos would be in Parks group and the Summer Celebration was fantastic. And then we're, and that's part of the whole kickoff of summer arts activities, so there's concerts in the park. On the 28th next week, I'm introducing the band as part of the Arts Council, but we have obviously a lot of performances, please try to come to some and they're fantastic community events.
Yeah?
So, I had two meetings last week, Puget Sound Cleaner Agency Advisory Board. One interesting, well, one, one good thing is that they've agreed for, to not increase the per capita assessment for next year, so that won't, that won't happen probably till 2018. And secondly, they announced that as part of this Volkswagen settlement, that every, all the states are going to be getting pretty large chunks of money for, to address diesel emissions and not, you know, completely separate apart from the, from the Volkswagen cars and that there's probably over $100 million coming to the state of Washington and that Puget Sound Cleaner Agency will have some role in administering. And what I had suggested at the, at the meeting and I will further, I will pursue this with Deanna at Sound Cities, is the idea that this would be a great opportunity for them to work with local governments on upgrading local fleets, so to look at heavy equipment that local governments are using and possibly spending money on, on vehicles or improved vehicles or whatever kind, whatever can address diesel emissions, so hopefully something might come of that. I also was at the Regional Policy Committee meeting where a lot of time was spent on the Best Starts for Kids levy. It is, you know, it's, I mean, the county has produced a 200-plus-page implementation plan, which is mind-numbing with it in its detail and it's, but it's, it's very comprehensive and if it does half of what it's, it's hoping to do, it would make a tremendous impact on our region.
Let's see, a couple of things from me, I guess the first is just a practical thing, maybe I should have brought it up earlier, but Carrie, you've got this CenturyLink signup thing, but Kirsten, we're also talking about Adam Smith's staff, same day, can we just make sure we get coordinated?
We've coordinated, mhm.
Okay.
There won't be a conflict.
Okay. Then that leaves us with, what do we sign up for to make sure that, so do, do we just know then the 3, 4, and 5 are all okay to sign up for on this because they won't conflict with the?
For those that are wanting to meet with Representative Adam Smith though, I would recommend signing up for either a 4 o'clock start time or a 5 o'clock start time, just to be on the safe side.
Okay. Very good, thank you. So, that's one. No one mentioned Summer Celebration?
Jeff did.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, you did. I, I, yes, you know, you did. I just wanted to mention I enjoyed Summer Celebration and the chance to speak to and thank our veterans is always something that I enjoy and it's nice, nice to have them there and leading out the parade, so having a chance to say thanks for their service afterwards is something that is, is an honor and saying it on behalf of the city is something that I, I certainly appreciate having the opportunity to do. And while Mercer Island may be the center of the world, I can tell you that for the last week, right after Summer Celebration, I ducked out and had a week of completely off-the-grid time in central Idaho on the middle fork of the Salmon River and it was, it was pretty much felt like a great place to be, center of the world, rather than being Mercer Island for a little while.
America?
Yeah. Might, might be able to win there. So, back from that, I drove all night last night to get back here for this meeting, in fact, so, but anyway, that's, that's my report, no meetings that I've had, other than, other than with rocks and waves and things like that on a river. So, with that, unless there is anything else, we are at 9:03, adjourned.